The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of January 10th will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And before closing the public hearing, both staff, applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will then be closed, and we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. We do have a new member tonight on the Planning Commission. And Riley, I'll turn it over for you to just tell us a little bit about yourself, just a couple sentences.
I'm Riley Williams. I'm born and raised here in Stillwater, Oklahoma. Went to college here, and I now work for Sea Star Property Management here in town as a project manager. I run our maintenance, plumbing, HVAC divisions.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, our first item of business this evening is a preliminary plat, SGB 22-29, and we will hear from staff first.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jaclyn Porter. I am the city planner, presenting this first item to you. The next items are going to be presented by Diana Hutter, associate planner. So, so the first item tonight is the preliminary plat known as Maple Creek Estate, located at 2024, 2108, 2112 North Husband Street. Here's an area view of the subject property located south of West Lake Road, along South Husband Street on the west side. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Stillwater Community of Christ Church is located to the north here. Swims Urban Development, Wildwood Edition is located here to the east, and Boomer Lake is right there to the west. You might want to see the next one. The subject properties are zoned small lot, single-family residential, RSS, with large lot, single-family residential districts located to the east and public to the west for Boomer Lake, and then similar zoning to the north and the south. These are Google street views of the southern border, the southern property, because it was originally three tracks. So this is southern portion, and then here's the northern border, boundary bordering property. I'm getting my words all together tonight. So, here is the slide containing images of the future land use map for the 2030 comprehensive plan. Future land use maps are used to forecast the desired uses of the community at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The subject properties are proposed to be low-density residential with similar to the east and public for Boomer Lake, and then around it. So, on to the good stuff. Here's the preliminary plat. Here's the proposed preliminary plat for Maple Creek Estates. This plat is proposing 12 lots, 11 of which are having access from a private street coming off of South Husband. The 12 lots with Block 1 containing 11 roughly over half an acre in size, and Block 2 containing one lot located to the north that is roughly three acres in size. All lots exceed the minimum lot size requirements in RSS zoning. The existing and future developments are on and will be, or will be, on septic system designed to the DEQ standards. As stated previously, majority of the proposed lots will be assessed from access from a private street. The private streets are required to meet city road design standards. Sidewalks are not required since the lot sizes exceed a 2,000 square foot requirement. The structure located on the proposed lot, 10 of Block 1, currently has a gravel drive access from North Husband. I don't know if you can see, it is that southern boundary photo, this one. Anyways, I'll go back. As improvements in infrastructure are developed, we are requesting for an agreement to be established for a continuance of use or a construction of a drive off of the proposed private street. There is nothing that we need to do at this time for the private access easement there. They will come when the final plat. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, oh wait, I missed Para. The drainage study submitted is a preliminary study of the drainage. A final drainage study is required with the final plat. In theory, the final drainage study is in a more in-depth correlation with the improvement plans. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates is here on behalf of the applicant. Do you have any questions for staff at this time? There is planning and engineering are in the house tonight.
Any questions from Commissioners?
So I presume septic systems are acceptable in that area?
Yes, because the lots are so large. They are allowed.
Okay, even though it's in proximity to a Blue Stream, I guess they call it, the Boomer Creek? That doesn't make any difference, I guess.
Yes, but...
On-site sewer systems are subject to the state, not to the city, but they are typically allowed to close streams.
So that would be my, that would be my question then, would the septic system go through DEQ approval rather than the city, or does it go through the city?
Correct, it's DEQ approval.
Okay.
The only thing the city would do is, or say a water meter, we would determine that they got approved by the state for the sewer system.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. I have one other question for staff. We recently looked at something similar with the private drive, and there was some question among the Commissioners about trash pickup and how that would work. Has that been vetted through sanitation?
Yes.
So similarly, trash would be able to, trash truck would be able to come down the private drive, pick up from the carts, and there wouldn't be a string of carts along Husband.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jaclyn. At this time, we'd ask if the applicants represented would like to come forward and add any additional information.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue. Jackie pretty well covered everything. First phase is 11 half-acre lots front end on the private road. That north three-acre parcel, there's really no known plans right now, but we're going to go ahead and platter it because there's three parent parcels that make up this entire plat. And at some point when that's developed, if it requires plating, we'll have to go through the preliminary plat process on that as well. Like Jackie stated, it's a preliminary drainage study at this point. Should this get approved, we'll move forward into infrastructure design plans and final drainage study. And so that's, if there's questions now or after the public hearing, we're here to answer them.
Questions from Commissioners?
I have a question. So we're dealing only with 11 lots tonight?
Well, there's technically 12 lots being platted, but 11 of them are single-family, half-acre, single-family homes.
Okay. The drainage report didn't include the lot in Block 2?
It was treated as off-site because there's no known plans. We don't know if it's going to be half-acre lots or something different. So it's being, it's not being studied in a developed condition because we don't know what the developed is. It's just an unchanged land use for the drainage study.
Okay, so preliminary plats don't require that?
They require a preliminary drainage study. And again, right now, that lot, it's zoned RSS, so it could be one, right now, there's a single-family house on it. That can remain. You can't build anything else on it unless it's subdivided, which then will trigger the other, the drainage studies and other requirements.
I had the drainage report, and it's voluminous, a lot of information in there, but could you give a brief summary? How do you, the conclusion was there wouldn't be any change, I guess, because you have to arrive at that, the city requires, you can't change the amount of water running off?
We can't release more, but if the drainage was to increase, we would have to provide detention. Typically, when we get, so we use the SCS method, which is the code requirement to study drainage basins like this. And so we look at the soil type, we look at the slopes, we look at the conditions existing and proposed, and assign curve numbers to those. We look at how the water's flowing, the flow path, to determine time of concentrations. It all gets plugged into the calculations and flow rates are created. Typically, when we get into larger, less dense developments like this, over half-acre and above, there's typically, because your flow paths aren't impeded by concrete as much, there's some drainage culverts and stuff here and there, but typically, those time of concentrations don't change enough to increase the flow. And so in this case, would it have been quarter-acre lots instead of half-acre lots? Detention and taking care of that drainage would be required. But we typically see in half-acre and larger lots that detention isn't required because the increase and runoff isn't there.
But the permeability of the undisturbed is high enough to absorb all the, even a major storm in Oklahoma, the permeability is enough. But the street, the permeability is zero. The house roof is zero, and I imagine they're going to have roads up to, or driveways.
Driveways, yes.
So, I don't know, maybe 10% of this is going to have a zero permeability? I'm surprised that wouldn't change.
The curve number changes a little bit, but we also are dealing with soils. There's A, B, C, and D soils. As are very permeable, Ds are not. In this area, we're typically in that C and D soil where it's not as permeable, and the calculations assume the ground's fully saturated. So really, it's the time of concentration, it's that flow path from the most remote part of the drainage basin to the endpoint that's the primary driver of the calculations.
But the soil doesn't, is irrelevant if it's covered with concrete or asphalt?
And again, that's why, I mean, our drainage manual's this thick, there's textbooks that are this thick that go into the theory and application of curve numbers based on soil types, based on uses.
But there's no soil, or the water is falling on asphalt?
On part of the site, but it may be 20% of the site. On a large development like this, it may be 40%. It's usually not more than that, but if you get the textbooks out, go sit in the classes and go through all the calculations, this is where we end up. I mean, we've done this, city engineering staff has reviewed it, their consultant has reviewed it, it follows the general engineering practice.
I'm just trying to get kind of a, what, an intuitive sense of it. I'm sure there's lots of mathematics involved in it, but so where does the water go that runs off the asphalt?
In this case, on the road, it's going to go into a bar ditch, which is grass, and the grass is going to slow it down. It's not going into a paved ditch that goes into a paved channel that goes into a pipe and discharges. All the outfalls on this site, on that south property line, are through grass-lined channels.
So I guess then the, just, I mean, thinking through, looking at the math, then you're assuming that the water that runs off of that asphalt or concrete street, which has a zero permeability, so it's not going to stay in the street, it's going to run out onto the soil next, right next to it.
Right.
All that roofs of the houses and all the driveways is going to be absorbed by the soil adjacent to the road.
We're not saying it's absorbed. I mean, part of it may be, but it's slowed down by the grass.
Okay, so by the time it gets to the edge of the lot, it's completely absorbed?
No, it's mitigated. The flow volume is mitigated.
Reduced to no change.
Would it be fair to say that in looking at this, there are other factors such as coefficient of friction and the rate of flow of the fluid across the area? That's all taken into consideration into the very complex calculations that are used to derive whether or not this meets standard? Would that be fair?
That's a fair statement, yes.
Okay, no, well, I know some of the mathematics as well, but it wouldn't be suitable to talk about it here. I was just trying to get an intuitive sense of it, that where do you think the water is going? And so it must still be absorbed on the site, so it's mitigated.
Correct.
Into the soil that's next to the road.
And it's not reduced to zero, but it's mitigated. It's not increased, the flow rate, the volume cubic feet per second of water leaving the site is not increased.
Not changed, yeah. One of the, there was a, some information that was asking about the water that's flowing onto the site off of Husband.
Yes.
It was communicated to us that the water enters from Husband.
Yeah, there's a low point on Husband in the north, pretty close to the middle, the north third of the site, there's a low point in Husband that water discharges. There's a, and the drainage study has all the basins in it, but there's water from near Lakeview that comes down to Husband from the north to the south. There's some water in Husband that drains north, that collects there and goes through the site and discharges. And that was all part of the calculations of the water coming in versus the water going out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else right now?
Yeah, I do have just a couple questions. On the preliminary plat, we're looking at, there's an existing structure on Lot 1, Lot 10, and I believe it's Lot 6. There's also, it looks like there's an outbuilding on Lot 3. Is it intended for all of those to remain in place? And if so, do they currently have septic systems that are functional there that would be contained within the new?
They do have septic, and they will be contained. The structure on Lot 6 is a barn, and it will be modified or demolished, you know, through construction, but the houses that are there will remain. The other reason we're going with onsite sewer treatment on these is the elevation of really the west, 75% of the lot is too low to get into the gravity system that's a lot or two south of here. So in lieu of putting in a lift station and either the developer or the city taking on that burden, we're just going bigger lots, space them out a little bit, and do onsite sewer.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item, and if so, please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition to this item? Yes, sure, please come forward. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roger Gilbert, and I'm a member of the Building Committee of the church that was two blocks north there, Community of Christ Church that was identified on 2124 North Husband. I'm going to address the list of violations that John Nasmit submitted to the council. You guys all should have seen a list of nine, actually 11, items on there, and I wanted to address those. One of those was the drainage issue, and I don't know if you have reviewed that or have comments to his list, or if I should take them on one by one? But I wanted to at least address some of those.
That's fine, if you would like to address those. I know he did reach out and did send emails to the Commissioners. We've copied that back to staff, so staff should be aware of what was sent to the commission. If you want to go through that, that would be fine. My understanding is that majority of that is been reviewed in the reports that has gone to staff, but yes, that would be fine.
Okay, I'd like to at least bring up a few of those points. One of them, to stay on track with the drainage question that you were asking about so much, is one of the issues appears to be, and I've visited with John Nasmit quite a bit about this and gone through the area, and I'm not a builder, so I don't know those kinds of things, I'm just reading information here, is that drainage that you're asking about coming off of Husband, going down the, through that neighborhood, is not really accounted for in a drainage section such that the easement's not accounted for. Therefore, the plots are going to be smaller in size than what, as far as what you've got to have for a septic system. And he's saying that basically there may not be room for a septic system. Once you put any sized building on there, you've got room for a building, or you've got room for a septic system, and maybe not both. So those easements are not calculated yet, therefore, once he has done the math to calculate that, sees that there won't even be room for septic systems on a half-acre, because once you look at the plots that are already, or the easements that are already there on the front of the lots, and the easements on the back, and add easements for drainage, which right now the drainage kind of goes through the middle, if you put up that map, we can look at it, but then there may not be room at all for septic systems, which require some amount of space. And since the buildings aren't even identified, it's hard to know how much space is needed, or how much space is even available on the back of a lot, but right now, the lot will not be large enough according to his calculations. Any thoughts on that, or has that been reviewed?
My understanding is that was reviewed by staff. So when we conclude this portion of public input, we can ask staff to comment on all these items.
A couple of other items I want to make sure that are reviewed or discussed is the, there was a question about sidewalks. It's a, it's actually his item number five on his list, but it's kind of near and dear to my heart, because I stood here 10 years ago, getting permission from the Stillwater Commission to build our church there. It's a 10-year-old church. We went through this process, and we were stopped and forced to put in about a $60,000 sidewalk on our church property. It's a sidewalk to nowhere. It goes to nowhere and it starts nowhere, because the requirement was told to us by the Commissioner or this process that we have to have a sidewalk on Husband Street, because it's a, some level of road, I don't know the correct term. So therefore, we would assume that any other buildings going in down, up and down that road would have the same type of requirement, because it was a $60,000 hit to us that we didn't expect, or we were kind of forced to do that. So I guess I would just ask about the sidewalk. It's kind of been a sore spot in the church's budget for a decade, and I didn't see a sidewalk in the plat, and I don't really know about the ones going to the houses, but I mean, going up and down Husband, I didn't see a sidewalk, and I just would ask about that question. Any comments, thoughts on that?
Say, again, that'd be an item that I would ask staff to comment on, about meeting requirements within the city, cities requiring.
Well, in that case, there certainly are a number of items on his list that you guys need to review, and I don't necessarily need to bring those up one by one. Those are a couple that I know a lot about, or I think I know a lot about, but, so that's what I have for now.
All right, thank you very much. I'd ask, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Please come forward. You could state your name and address for the record.
Jeanette Nasmit, 2119 North Husband, and my husband is the one that sent the email. I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but he tried to be very thorough in understanding the plans, and you know, there is concern about drainage, and also because of all the septic systems, you know, environmental issues, the creek near there. And so I guess that, since I live across the street from the project, you know, where the development is supposed to go, several years I was here, and others from the neighborhood, and the planning was to discuss a development on the north end. And at that time, the Commissioners decided that it was a bad fit, and they did not approve that proposal. So here we are again, and the owners have acquired more property, and some of the same issues are being talked about, the septic systems for sure. And so I just hope that before anything is approved, that you will think about the concerns that we have as far as the drainage and the septic systems and the environment, because sometimes I think a project is approved, the work starts, and then the problems happen. And so then you have to have a solution for the problem. So I just hope that you carefully look at the things talked about, and before you approve, make sure that there won't be those kinds of problems. And, you know, if you live in the neighborhood, you have a different maybe look at it than if you're just developing and not living there. So thank you for your time, and thank you for looking at my husband's emails. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Mrs. Nasmit, I have just one confirmation I wanted to make. Your husband did send two or three emails, and the last one he sent, my understanding of his position was that he wanted to be sure that all these items were looked at and that the development was done in the manner that the city requires it to be, and that he didn't oppose development.
Right.
Right, just that everything was done in the manner it was to be done.
Right, and I don't think anyone opposes something new in the neighborhood. You know, that's not it, it's just the idea that it's done properly. I mean, the hope is that something new would be an asset to the community, to the neighborhood. To bring something new is not a bad thing, it's just that there are concerns about drainage. You know, I know things happen like that, that they start a project that's been approved, and then in hindsight, you think, well, gosh, I should have paid more attention to the detail. So anyway, I do thank you for your time.
I appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Billy Treadwell. My wife and I live at 2101 North Husband, which is directly across the street from this development. And I'm not actually wanting to speak against it, but I would like to point something out in regards to the gentleman's comments about the sidewalk. Where we live, there is a lot of foot traffic that goes, but also where we live, there is a lot of high school traffic that drives up and down that road. My only concern when it comes to sidewalks is if they build that development and they add houses where children are in. If they want to go to Boomer, we're going to need to either cross the street there, where there's no crossing, to the sidewalk that is on our side of the street. If you look at the sidewalk that the church built, it comes down and connects to this plat that we're looking at. From the safety standpoint, and where I know how fast the traffic drives on that road, because I have actually reached out to the police department and asked them to help slow down, we've offered our driveway for them to park in to catch the speeders, that might be something that should be considered for the safety of anybody who's living in those homes, wants to use what I believe would be an attraction to it to live close to Boomer Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening present that would like to speak in opposition of Seeing no one, I'll ask if applicant could, well, the first thing I'll ask is, staff or applicant, are there any of the items that have been addressed to this point that you could provide additional information or answers to?
I believe we've addressed the drainage and the septic. The intent on the onsite sewer is not going to be the leach fields underground. The standard anymore is the aerobic systems that spray that require a lot less area. We were looking at the math earlier, it's about 2,500 square feet versus the 10,000 to 11,000 referenced in that letter you all got. And the sidewalk will work with staff on addressing those sidewalk concerns.
And that would be for a home of approximately what size?
A four-bedroom house. And that's what we just kind of, that three, four-bedroom, it varies by 200 square feet, but it's two or three sprayheads is what would be required.
All right, very good. Okay, would you be able to answer about the sidewalk issue, or do we need to ask staff on that?
I think we need to work with staff on that, but understand the concerns, so. Anything else?
Anything else?
Could you restate the reasoning for why you can't access the city sewer?
So, the gravity. Poop flows downhill. We learned a different term in school, but the west three-quarters of the site is lower, doesn't allow us to get into the sewer, that there's a public sewer a lot south. That there's a public sewer a lot south of the south line of this, but the elevation can't serve 75% of the site. So we'd have to put a lift station in.
Right.
And those, yes, they cost money, but they're also very labor-intensive, and I wouldn't want a lift station sitting down next to the creek. I'd much rather these dispersed systems being a little further, so.
All right, thanks.
But we'll work with staff on the rest of the items.
Okay. I see staff looking in the book. Very good.
All right. So as addressed earlier, sidewalks in this section are, they are exempt, they are not required because in the subdivision, the lot, the minimum lot size is 2,000 square feet and these are exceeded. They're 26,000 plus. So that negates from them doing it for along Husband as well, since they're having access off of the private street. So, and we haven't in the past required them to do it along the arterial street.
Well, not in recent past. Yes, that would be true. Okay.
So those are the rules. What about what should be done?
What should be done? Well, I mean, that's how it's been interpreted and we can't kind of just change it because that can lead to legal issues. But we are working on and making adaptations to the code. So if you all have recommendations, we can make changes to the code.
Could you elaborate on the sidewalk that's running up and down Husband from there, let's say from Lakeview to the high school? Do you have any recollection of what is currently there?
Yeah, this is outside, yeah. That's not on the agenda.
Fully no.
Well, it would connect.
We would need to, as she's saying, the code does not require the sidewalk now. However, in order to make that happen, we would have to readdress the code and make amendments to the code. And staff is in the process of going through the code to make some revisions, and that would be a time we could look into that.
If you would like to make a recommendation, we can do so.
But, you know, it is outside this, but these aren't the only people that would use the sidewalk.
But they've already stated the code does not require it, and you're wanting to compare another property that was required, which is not on, it's totally two separate issues.
Well, I'm trying to get it. How much traffic is there going to be walking out there along Husband?
There shouldn't be on the side.
I do not know. And the code still doesn't require it.
Yeah.
At this time.
So we're stuck with code. Forget everything else.
We have to follow the code as written.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I think that concludes that portion. Jekyll, could you provide us findings and alternatives?
Findings, the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision and zoning requirements set forth in our code. This C3 plan, which is our comprehensive plan, recommends low-density use at this location. Your alternatives, one, accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented. Two, approve the proposed preliminary plat with conditions noting what conditions could be met for the approval of the final plat. Three, reject findings and deny the proposed preliminary plat as presented. Number four, find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a decision and table the request to a certain date noting that action must be taken within 60 days of the public hearing.
Thank you. Any discussion or perhaps a motion?
Well, I think this discussion has brought up the issue that certainly there needs to be serious consideration of changes to the code in regard to sidewalks because having code dictating based on lot sizes seem to be a very micro view when it should be, we should be looking at neighborhood connectivity issues and safety issues. So I don't know really what language we would use to request a review of the code to look at revising it regarding the sidewalks, but that's what I would suggest.
We can do that.
I would agree with you, Commissioner. I think that the neighborhood connectivity for pedestrian traffic is very important, particularly along a street such as this that is really, and it's considered arterial, is that an arterial street with this much housing in this area, this much residential, and so close to amenities such as Boomer Lake in particular and...
High school.
Exactly. Public education, shopping, many, many, many uses that can be on that sidewalk. So I would agree with Commissioner Shanahan on this.
We will do that.
Anyone considering a motion?
So the discussion that you've just brought up is not in our purview at all. Is that, that's a question.
I can't tell what you were, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Whoever can answer.
Yeah, you can't change the code and apply the code differently to this piece of property. That's not something you could do and say.
And we can't deal with anything relative to code in our decision.
No, you cannot change code.
Or include anything relevant to code unless there's a code violation. There has to be a code violation for us to make a mention of it.
So I think, I think if I understand the question you're asking, if we're looking at alternatives and alternative number two, if there are any conditions that the commission would recommend to see.
Right.
Could it be within the purview of the commission to note that a sidewalk for connectivity would be recommended?
You cannot require that now. The code does not require that, so that could not be a condition that you have to require. I do believe the applicant, as he stated, would discuss it with staff. I don't think they ruled it out, but they're not required as the code is written.
All of the discussion of the sidewalk is off limits. Okay. That's a question. It is? Any discussion of the sidewalk?
It cannot be conditioned to prove the plat. You cannot, it cannot be conditioned of the approval.
Okay. Well, that's the only issue of concern that I would view. I think this kind of development is important within, and it's a pretty central area. It's good to have diverse housing available, and it's a pretty nice location, right next to Boomer, near the high school. It's probably a better, it's a good use of the land rather than it being dispersed way out to the outskirts of town. This is a fantastic location for this kind of a development. I think they've addressed the issues of drainage and the, I understand with septic systems, and the technology today is really good, so I don't know why there would be a problem as long as, I guess the DEQ is going to have to approve it. It seems like a good use of this property.
So do I hear a motion to accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented?
I move we accept the findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. The item is approved 4-0. Next item on the agenda is a specific use permit, SUP 22-08, Northern Watt Grower LLC. We shall hear from staff first.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Diana Hood. I'm the Associate City Planner. And as was stated, this item is for a specific use permit at 1198 East Airport Road for a medical marijuana-growing facility. This is an area map of the subject property. It is located approximately half a mile east of the intersection of East Airport Road and Perkins Road. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. And this subject property is located within the General Industrial Zoning District with Commercial General to the southwest and Public to the east. This is a street view looking north off of East Airport Road towards the subject property. And this is the Futureland Use Map, which is, sorry. This is the Futureland Use Map, which is, which was adopted as part of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Futureland Use Maps are used to predict desired needs of the community at the time of adoption. The Futureland Use Map has this area projected to be an industrial use. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions from Commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you. So at this time, I would ask if the applicant or their representative are available and would like to make any comment? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none, we'll ask staff to return and present findings and alternatives.
So the findings are that Oklahoma State law allows for the operation of medical marijuana facilities, and the Land Development Code allows for the use of a medical marijuana growing facility in the General Industrial Zoning District with a specific use permit. Your alternatives are, one, accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented. Find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the request. Or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So, no concerns about the adequacy of the water, electricity, and sewage there to support the type of facility they will, they put in? Those are all suitable, satisfactory?
There already is. I grow at this location, it's just a change of ownership only. Right. It's, the use has already, it's the same use, it's just that it's been, it's changing ownership. The code makes them come back if they have changed ownership, and that's the only that's changing is the ownership.
So there's no issue? I mean, it could grow or, I mean, they aren't required to stick with the size of the facility they have now. They could expand it. But the city has no concerns about being able to supply this site with what is needed in order to do what they want to do with it?
That's correct.
So city utilities are there to serve this business use?
I'm sure you did. I just wanted to confirm it. I mean, that's...
Yeah. It was originally reviewed in the original use when it was proposed, so and all the utilities and everything is set up for an industrial use.
Okay, great.
So it should be met. So if there's any additions or like added on and they expand, that will come under review at that time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioners, any discussion or perhaps a motion?
I motion to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. Next item on the agenda is Globe Ventures LLC with a specific use permit, SUP 22-11. We shall hear from staff first.
All right. So this is another specific use permit for 1023 East Sixth Avenue. This is a request to operate a medical marijuana dispensary. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is located at the intersection of Berdick Street and Sixth Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. And the zoning map. Commercial General is located to the north and west, Light Industrial to the southwest, and Small Lot Single Family Residential is located to the south and east of the subject property. Here's a street view looking south off of East Sixth Avenue. And this is, once again, the Futureland Use Map, which is used to predict and future desired uses of the community at the time of its adoption. This area is projected to have commercial uses. And are there any questions for staff?
I did have a question. It was just to confirm something. The street view shows just this tiny little facility that's, looks like it used to be a gas station, it's used for the dispensary, but the outline on the map that's hashed is like the entire parking lot.
Yes.
So it's going to stay as it is? It's not going to take over the whole parking lot?
No. No, it will be operating within the existing building.
Okay.
And, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so this was brought before the commission because again, it's a change, only a change in ownership.
Correct. It's just a change in ownership.
That was going to be my question. It appears currently with the signage that it has been in use as a dispensary, the old Gibble Gas Station.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you. So at this time, I would ask if the applicant is present and would like to come forward and offer any additional information?
On the applicant, I don't really have any...
Okay, you can, yeah, you can just come forward. Yeah.
I'm one of the owners.
Yeah, if you could just state your name and address for the record so they can just get you...
Raheli O. Mitchell, 1706 Gray Ward Drive Lot in Oklahoma. I'm one of the owners, and like she said, it's just change of ownership and a rebranding.
All right.
Any other information you guys need?
Any questions the commission has for the applicant? I don't think so. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
All right, no problem.
At this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll ask staff to return and give us findings and alternatives, please.
All right. The findings are, once again, that Oklahoma State law allows for medical marijuana dispensaries, and the Land Development Code allows for the use of a medical marijuana dispensary in the Commercial General Zoning District with a specific use permit. The alternatives are, one, accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented. Secondly, find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and not recommend that city council approve. Or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or perhaps a motion?
Motion to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. That concludes the panel. That concludes the public hearings for this evening. The next item on the agenda would be miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action. The only item listed is that the next planning commission meeting will be January 24th, so that's two weeks from today. Oh, I do see something from staff that was not on the agenda. All right.
Good evening, commission. Jeff Matthews, Community Development Director for the City of Stillwater, and I have an awesome staff. Usually, don't have to be up here and talk, but I did want to let you all know that the City of Stillwater has a current RFQ that's out for planning firms that are going to be working on the codification process of our planning, zoning, future land use map. And just want to let you know, we appreciate all that you do. We appreciate the concerns that you have and the citizens have. We are aware that the code is ever-changing, or we are ever-changing, and so sometimes the code has to as well. In fact, Kim can tell you that we're in a unique situation where we're currently working on adoption of new building codes as well. So, that is a process that's taking place, and I just wanted to make you all aware that that is happening now. Unfortunately, things don't happen overnight. There is a process that has to take place, legality-wise, that has to take place, but that is in the works. And I just thought it'd be good tonight to inform you. There'll probably be some that are tuning in, and just know that we are looking at that. We are working on that. Many times, my office is quick to catch frustrations and desires for change, and I and we deeply appreciate that and understand that and respect that. And we understand there's sometimes need for change, and that's something that we're currently working on. But we wanted to make you aware of it, make the citizens aware of it. That's something that's currently going on right now, so...
Question. So, what's the scope of this RFQ that has been let or is going to be let soon?
Yeah. So, it's currently...and I don't know that we'll get deep into the weeds on all of it, but I can kind of give you a bird's eye view, if you will, but essentially, what's currently out there right now is requests...we're looking for qualifications of planning firms that can basically come in, and then there'll be a selection process after that, but basically can come in and help us analyze our current codes. The...are potentially looking at a future land use map, the way that our city is functioning. Look at issues and things such as form-based code in different areas of the code and give us input. This is the...kind of the preliminary process of getting those individuals to present us with their qualifications and ability to be able to do that, and so that's currently what's going on.
So, it's really just the first phase of the process?
This is phase one, and we're excited about it. It's long anticipated, and it's something we finally feel like we've kind of pulled the trigger on. It's happening, I believe, Jackie, February 1st, I believe, is the deadline for the information from those different firms, and so we hope to start getting that information in and getting that ball rolling. We're working with city management and some other departments, legal and some other departments, but we're excited about getting that process going, so...
All right, thank you.
So, this will be sort of an audit to perform?
To an extent, that is correct, yeah. They're going to look at...exactly, they're going to look, to an extent, at our current codes and the layout of our city, and give us ideas as far as what we can do to improve, what codification needs to take place. They'll help us in that manner, so...
How often does Stillwater do this operation?
Well, I've been here a year and two months, so I can't...but it's been a number of years, I do believe. There, of course, has been some changes, to my understanding, over the years, kind of spot codification, I would call it, or some changes that have taken place, but we're hoping this will be more all-inclusive, kind of looking throughout the entire code and looking at where we're at now. Stillwater, it's exciting what's taken place, the amount of growth we've had, the infrastructure that's going on, and so we realize that we need to kind of look at the entirety of everything that's going on here, and so we need a professional. Our staff, some of it is just the ability to manage the time to be able to do all that, and some of it is, these are very high-qualified individuals that do this on a regular basis, so that's what they're going to come in and do.
So, there'll be a final report?
Absolutely. Well, yeah, you...this commission, city council, there'll be a lot more to come. I just...tonight, I just...I was telling Jackie, I think it's important that this commission knows, the citizens know, that this process is taking place, so...
Great, thanks.
Very exciting.
It is exciting.
Long-awaited.
Exactly, exactly. And that's all I had. I just wanted you to inform me, so...thank you.
Glad you came to talk, to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time and all that you do.
All right. Any...anything...any other impromptus? Oh, no, you're good. You're good. Didn't want to cut you off. All right, last thing on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. We shall now vote.